So strong. When the dog went in there, you could tell that she was hiding off its paws.
Hello.
Yeah, we did that this morning.
There's nice little upper collar on.
Yeah.
I tell them so.
Oh, okay. Right. Yeah, right. Right.
Or get some money.
Right.
Get some money. Take something.
Go on. Sound and learn.
Thank the third.
Yeah. We go through that.
Um, I know. I made a little.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for joining our December twenty first, two thousand twenty one council meeting. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty one, P dot L nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting is posted on the Borough of Pennsboro Municipal Bulletin Board designed for that purpose. Notice was also posted on the Borough of Pennsboro website at W W W dot Pennsboro dash M J dot org and was emailed to the official newspaper as provided by a resolution. Additionally, in response to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen, this December twenty first, two thousand twenty one meeting is held in the courtroom of the Borough Hall, One State Street, Pennsboro, with no more than thirty two persons present and via Zoom online meeting platform. Everyone, please stand with pledge of allegiance. Your right hand over your heart and beside the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Madam Clerk, can you do the thing? Almighty Father, as we stand before you this evening, we ask you for your guidance and wisdom in all matters which we uncovering body, that we always be aware of the needs of the people of this community, for our expectations and the understanding to lead and direct others in the very best manner possible. We ask all of this in your name. Amen. Amen. You may be seated. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Here.
And your daughter.
Yeah.
Councilman Martin.
Here.
Council President Minty.
Here.
Councilman Rambo.
Here.
Councilwoman Sharpie.
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for December seventh, two thousand twenty one regular session. May I have a motion to adopt?
To make a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Giordano. May I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Council President Minty. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Giordano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Council President Minty.
Yes.
Councilman Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sharpie.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is payment of bills and approval of bill list. May I have a motion to adopt?
Um, I did have one question about the bills I was, as I was looking over. Um, I was just wondering, I seen, um.
Hold up, Councilman Carter, one sec. You have to bring a motion for discussion.
Okay, uh, can I bring a motion up for discussion then, please?
Motion. Discussion. So.
Okay. So we need a motion to adopt first. Thank you, Council President Minty. May I have a second? Thank you, Councilman Giordano. Now we can have a discussion. Go ahead, Councilman Carter.
No, I was just wondering, I seen, uh, one bill on there, uh, for, it was under recreation for Eleanor. It said basically for, I guess it was Christmas at the park. I would just wonder what was paid for. Were you allowed to ask? Am I allowed to ask what was that, uh, I think it was like a hundred and eight dollars, I believe. Um, but I was just wondering what it was for.
Yes, that was for the, the angel that's next to the tree.
Okay.
She picked that up from Home Depot.
Okay, no problem. I just was curious, no problem at all.
There. Just for the, we actually, we should change that. That's not supposed to be a bridge. It's supposed to be. Okay, so we're gonna just transfer it to county case.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? Councilman Carter?
No, that was all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Council President. I saw on there for planning board. I'm not sure how it works. But I seen on the website that the planning board had canceled a couple meetings. I seen there was a bill on this list for planning board. Was that for their meetings or was it something else?
This is good.
Can I ask everyone to unmute, please, so that we don't pick up your background noise?
Okay, so, you ready?
Yes.
So the attorney, um, that you're talking about, the first bill is for the work that's done with foreclosures. That's the one eighty hundred ninety one dollars. The next one is, is, um, is tax appeals. I'm actually surprised that's not higher because I think, you know, we're going to, we're going to. Yeah, not this next one. Planning board is fourteen hundred for October and November. And that's because prior to the meeting, if it isn't canceled, the attorney still gets ready for it. In his, in his invoice, he breaks down the specifics of where that look like, uh, he breaks down specifically how that money is spent.
How much is that? How much is that?
It's one thousand four hundred sixty dollars.
That's like ten hours worth of work. Seems like a lot for a meeting that didn't happen.
You, you're saying that it's related to me. Are you sure that that's what it is? Or are you just?
It's for the planning board.
Right. So now you're saying that all that is related to tax or a meeting or you don't know?
I don't know.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah, you're right.
It seems to suggest, like you're suggesting it's all for one. We, I think we know that.
Do we have a break panel on that?
Good.
Can we review that first? Did anybody review that?
Yeah, I re, I re.
What was the word, though?
I just, I didn't see. Can, can you guys, can we just keep moving on and let me go get it?
It just seemed like that's.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction of resolutions for consideration. Yes. And we need to.
Now, what, what, what you need to do actually at this point is you need to just move your post comment of the, of the actual book here pending, uh, review of information.
Okay.
That's what you're reviewing.
Okay.
It's suspended.
So we're just suspending, uh, the vote for the payment of the bill.
Pending the review of information.
Pending the review of the information. Come back to it. All right, next item, introduction of resolutions for consideration by consent. The first item is two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one thirty nine. That is a resolution authorizing lean assignment. The next one is two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one forty pro. Resolution authorizing a refund over payment of two thousand twenty one tax billing. Next, two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one forty one. That is resolution authorizing refund tax for paid for a total disabled veteran. Next item, two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one forty two. That is a resolution authorizing to transfer over gain tax from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty two. Next item, two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one forty three is a resolution to authorize release of mortgage. And last, two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one forty four. That is a resolution authorizing budget transfer. May I have a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one thirty nine through two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one forty four?
Can you guys say again?
I couldn't hear for a second for some reason.
Yeah, I'm gonna repeat it, okay? Um, I just asked for a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one thirty nine through two thousand twenty one dash twelve dash one forty four. And I believe the motion was managed by Councilwoman Sharpie and seconded by Council President Minty. Madam Clerk will do roll call vote now. Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Giordano.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
Council President Minty.
Yes.
Councilman Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sharpie.
Yes.
Call for permission.
One more.
There's actually.
Yes, we have voted on this by. All right, okay.
Can't hear again if y'all talking.
I can't hear anything.
I see faces moving, but I don't hear no sound.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay, y'all, yeah, I see you just took it off mute. Y'all was on mute for some reason.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on within the night. Okay, so we're moving on to the committee reports and the first report is buildings in ground and that would be Councilwoman Martin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Um, so the Christmas decorations are up in the center of town between Main and Broad Streets. Uh, Memorial Park is decorated with lights and we even have a Christmas tree there as well. Uh, we added two dwarf spruce trees, um, in the flower pot and the front of Borough Hall, um, is decorated as well. Um, the only other thing I have is, um, in the new year, we, we will begin working on fixing up the foyer area. That's the entrance on the side of the building of the Borough Hall. Um, when you go in to see the police, that, um, foyer area will begin, um, we will begin repairs there and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to general government, Councilwoman Sharpie.
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that clean communities, um, soon we're not going to be using plastic bags or straws. That's going to go into effect in two thousand twenty two, around March. Um, also Steve did a very good job of touching us up in our reporting for clean communities. There hadn't been a report where I think, Erica, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the last five years. And they requested that we get that up to date. They're all done by the furthest year out. Um, I'm gonna let Erica take the finance report that Steve prepared. And I have some things from Jen. Her meeting was yesterday. Um, I have a list of people who have not completed their cybersecurity training. Um, I'm gonna be contacting everyone. You should have been getting an email from them probably every week telling you that you didn't complete this. It's important because if we do not have all the employees complete this or deductible increases significantly if we have a cyber attack. And I'm talking about by hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I will contact everybody individually so I can get that done by the end of the year. Basically, you listen to a recording and it tells you how to give people your sign-ins, not to click on things, things like that, pretty obvious things, but we have to listen to it. We've had no lost time accidents this year. And we have some funds that we have to expend by January thirty first or else we lose them. Um, I'm gonna be talking to Steve about that since he's encumbered the funds and review with him what they can be spent on. Either Tracy has done a good job of spending the wellness money. We still have twenty five hundred dollars in cyber risk management money, twenty five hundred dollars. We have thirty five hundred dollars in operational safety budget and we have thirty four fifty in the free incentive program award. Um, if you remember last year, we were able to attend the elected officials liability seminar. This, and we received two hundred and fifty dollars credit towards our bill for every person eligible to attend that attends. Um, this year they're going to be in person, so I will circulate the vocations and the times. Basically, Byron, Duffer and Marley and they each have a different date. So I'll make sure all the council people get that. Their annual retreat is gonna be in July. We had new man, where we had six claims on managed care, which gives people, um, it saves us money for missing injuries. So you go into managed care and they will put you in on transitional duty, things like that. So that saves us some money. We settled the case that we had with the gentleman that had an incident at the bank with our officers in coin's point. The total cost of that was nine thousand dollars. And this year our insurance cost is gonna be four hundred and twenty thousand dollars and change. I think that's all. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to housing and zoning and planning, uh, Councilman Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, unfortunately, there's been no activity at all with the planning board. And, uh, uh, there has been no applications at all with zoning. And, uh, I have my first backmate out and so unfortunately, I have nothing to report.
Ron, I have a question. Yeah, so the, the new auto zone going up, so all that's completed with the planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all those resolutions are in and, uh, the same with, uh, Wawa. All the resolutions bring with them as well. It's just a matter of, uh, permits that they're working on. Auto damage got all their permits and that's why they're.
Is the permit because it's never been a gas station?
The. For what for order though?
For Wawa.
For Wawa? No, they have, uh, they gotta get state permits. Uh, there's county permits that they have to get, uh, and they have to be approved. Like traffic control, uh, because of the light and the action. And then because it's their county, there's a county road as well as the state road. So all those regulations have to be, uh, all the Ts and Is have to be dotted before they can go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
That was gonna be my one question as well, uh, Ron, uh, with the, with Wawa. They are putting a gas station there as well?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I missed that one. Yes, they are. It's gonna be a, a super well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I had a question. Someone asked me and I told them I'd get them an answer. They were asking, they said there's a, a large bulldozer, um, clearing away trees and brushing away dirt around in the empty lot directly behind the coffee, coffee garage. The, the garage is called Coffee's Garage on Virginia Avenue next to Metro P C S. I think that's over there. They were asking.
I don't know what you're talking about, but I guess I just know, I'm not aware of what's going on there.
Okay, that's good. Yeah.
Well, they, they think it looks like they're cleaning it up, but the place is pretty bad. The coffee is over there.
Okay.
So the, the people are in it now. It's been cleaning it up and trying to do it. Looks, it looks a lot better.
Okay. So you were doing behind coffee. So there was a place where they had a bunch of cars and tires and stuff out here. I don't know if that's what they told you.
Yeah, I believe it has had a little box back there and so all that's cleaned up and they've been doing it little by little.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Anything else, Councilman Giordano?
I have nothing else.
Okay. All right, moving to recreation and forensics. Councilman Carter.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I currently do not have anything to report other than the toy drive that we just had this past Saturday. Well, I guess I can go back two weeks. Um, previous week before last Saturday, uh, the eleventh, we had our, uh, Christmas lighting, um, that I wasn't able to attend due to work, but the event looked, from the pictures that I did see, it looked like it was a good event. It looked like people had a good time. Um, I did see some videos of people singing, um, and the actual lighting of the tree. Um, and it looked like it was a great event. Um, I wanted to say once again, thank you to everybody who did help put lights up, put the tree up, uh, get the tree, uh, help stand the tree, put the lights on, all the decorations. They look very, very, very nice. Uh, I want to thank everybody who participated in that. Uh, no matter how big of a job you did or how small of a job you did, I want to say thank you to everybody. Last Saturday, we did have our annual toy drive at St. James High School or Middle School, I think it was. Or St. James, that's what I'm just used to calling it on State Street. We did have a successful event. I want to thank everybody who also helped with that. We were able to pass out a lot of toys to all the people who came out, had hot chocolate passing out. And that was a good time. That was from 2:00, 4:00, 4 o'clock. Hopefully, everybody can put those toys to use and can be blessed in their own way with whatever they did receive. And I just want to say thank you once again with everybody who helped. The guy that basically brought, I'm not as sure of his name, but he brought all the toys up there in the back of his truck and had a nice little trailer to help us out and help us set up. I want to thank him as well. Thank you for the police coming up there to chaperone everything while they were there. Outside of that, that is the only thing, two things I can think of to report, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Moving on to public works, Councilman Rambo.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. Moving to public safety, Council President Mincy.
The only thing I have is, we know the COVID numbers are rising. Everybody, you gotta be safe. Don't get vaccinated, because we don't want to see you in a hospital.
Did you make up a new word, vaccinated?
Because that was good. I like vaccinated. That's real good.
Hey, the numbers is rising.
All right, moving on to departmental reports. Business administrator, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm going to get quick because I gave a very long presentation last week to bring everybody up to date on certain things that are going on and say that we, as the Borough, created an application for any company that is interested in bringing cannabis to Penns Grove that went live in the middle of last week. And as of now, we have about 12 applications. One of those applications represents a co-op of micro businesses. The industry is continuing to look at Penns Grove, and next, between the end of this week and next week. This week, the committee will have all of the applications, and the review process for those will begin next week. And we anticipate towards the beginning of January to possibly potentially for council, for the committee to recommend to the full council for that. There was a, there was something I said earlier about Wawa, and just in case anyone's curious, I talked to the developer. Well, the developer actually contacted me earlier because he needs, because he said that he's still waiting for his permits from D C A. They're being under stasis. I just connected a few people that I know. That's really there, that's in their space, but I know a couple of people, so I connected them, and hopefully they can get their permits, because that's the only thing delaying the construction.
What type of permit?
Also.
He said water.
Water?
Yes. He said, you know, he said water, then he said, but then he wanted me to connect him to the fire inspector. So I don't, I don't, I'm sure it makes sense somehow.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, also with regard to the Wawa situation, we will be presenting with a prior resolution that was passed by the council regarding the proposed pilot corporation. So that's one of the things that will be coming up next year for your consideration.
Did they apply for a pilot when they went before the planning and examining board?
I'm not.
I don't remember that, because I was on at that time, and I don't remember an application for a pilot.
I'm not sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
Oh, I might, I might, I want to bring up one other thing. The mayor brought this to my attention. I already knew about it anyway. We can, we have a pile of stuff. I don't know if I talked about this last week, but we have a pile of stuff on. There's a pile of brush and dump stuff on Landing Avenue. And it's a struggle, it's still a struggle for me to find a contractor that's willing to pick it up because there's so much stuff, and it's multiple trips without us paying a huge fee for a dumpster and all that. So I just want you to know that, like, we're on it. What I'm considering doing is grouping some of the dump trash into one project and then presenting that as a, to get, to get a bid on the entire project as opposed to bringing them into different parts and pieces and different parts throughout the Borough. If anybody has any thoughts on that, don't let me know. I'm also going to have a call with Mr. Howe, who works for Salem County Department of Health, to see if we can brainstorm on what we can do about making it easier for the folks to dump at the dump in, the dump in, where is it, correct?
How's the improvement authority? Who don't, do we know who don't the things?
No. Well, we may, actually, we might not.
Because the improvement authority will do an investigation and prosecute if necessary.
Yeah, we talked, I talked to them about it. In the Department of Environmental Protection.
Yeah, yeah, that's kicking a way up, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Moving on to finance officer report. Good evening, everyone. Tax rate collection percentage comparison for budget years 2021, 2020 is 2.97%. Finance office receipts from July 2021 to October 2021 approved at December 7th meeting. Need to be read for a minute. I neglected to read them because I didn't have the capacity. And I also have new receipts for November 2021, so I will do that first. So July officer, finance officer people receipts total is $513,939 in taxes. For the month of August, it is $2,002,5481. September is $1,164,688. And for October, it was $600,096,67. And for November, it's $1,11,103,7. And also budget transfer resolution, which transfers the amounts for budget appropriations that have excess to those appropriations which are insufficient. I believe that everyone has a copy of this. So should I read the amounts or have a copy? All right. The balance of the remaining 25%, 137,500 in transitional aid was received. And that is all I have. Thank you.
You have, Madam Mayor, quick, we'll make sure you get the numbers.
Yes. Well, I actually, Steve emailed me the report this morning, too, so I can have that, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to police director report, Director Rivera.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My sole focus and the only part of my report has to do with attrition. We've, we lost an officer that had about five years. He resigned last month, and we have another officer with, with close to six years who's leaving us at the end of this month along with one of the officers who just got hired in July. So we're down those three spots. And to add another one, we just had a resignation last week. So this is our focus moving into the new year. Thank you to Council President Mincy, who chairs the Public Safety Committee for, for showing us that the website needed to be updated, so we're working on that right now. But Mayor, this, this is the focus that we have to concentrate on right now, and that's all I have to report. Because we need to hire some new officers ASAP, quality people.
Yes, has, has, or let me say, how soon will the positions be posted on the website and the public be made aware?
So, so Mr. Brown approved the temporary budget so that we could go out and advertise. I put it on my personal LinkedIn page to try and draw some candidates, and then that spread nationally through my, my contact of 3,000 people in my network. And the website, our website will be open tomorrow, but we've got to open it up much broader. So I've already researched all the law enforcement websites that get the most hits, and Mr. Brown will free up that money, and we'll get, we'll hit the ground running with it right after the holiday beginning of next week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scarpazie, you had a question?
Since we're having problems with retention, conducting exit interviews to see if there's something here that is a ride? Because that's an awful lot of officers to lose in such a short amount of time.
It is, and I, and I appreciate that question. Now, being a new hire myself in April and, and having my, the reputation I have in law enforcement as a no-nonsense type of person, I would have thought we'd have some, some resignations early in my tenure, and that's not the case. So what we're looking at now is one officer, I cannot speak to what the resignation was regarding. Another one just doesn't seem to want to be a police officer, that's two. The third one went to work in a place that's much closer to his house as well as the fourth one. So it really seems like proximity is the key. Both of those officers, the last two that I just mentioned, were traveling over an hour and 45 minutes to get to work. Add that on to their 12-hour shift, and it becomes, you know, a bit burdensome. So what we need to do is recruit heavily in South, South Jersey. We have the officer in charge, Officer Fret, who is reaching out to the local academies who are graduating people. But I like your idea about the exit survey, so we could add that as well to the process.
Thank you.
Rich?
Yes, sir.
It's just a suggestion. I don't know if it's a good. But being the fact that you need officers right now in the interim while you're trying to get officers, what do you think about anything as far as services, with Carney's point, where those guys that are off work, that they can get, you know, extra pay by throwing in for where it's needed here in Penns Grove?
So we're, we're open to those suggestions, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilman. You know, I know, I know it was visited about 20 years ago when there was a potential for an agency merger. We have the capacity to contract with Carney's Point, other surrounding neighborhoods, as well as the Sheriff's Department. And we also have a doomsday scenario where if, for whatever reason, we just don't have officers left, where we would be able to do those shared services. The problem is, and I'll say this publicly, is this is something that you have to tread lightly on because it affects the officer's morals and what their career paths are and what their outlooks are. Do they think they're going to be replaced? But yes, in the short term, in the interim, it's, it's possible that we could use some other resources and get a lending hand on, on our manpower issue.
Are there any more questions from council? Okay. Thank you, Director Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief Adam?
He was on earlier, too.
Was he?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know. Receive anything from Adam or Debbie, but Adam did tell me, this is for the planning board members, that when you do another project, please include the fire chief so they can add their inputs to what needs to be where as far as the buildings. I think the people for AutoZone did calling. But like Wawa, if he gets a chance, because everybody needs to be in on it. So he said, if you talk to him again, tell him, please, include the fire department in on that also.
Thank you. All right, I have no report for Debbie. Debbie, are you on it?
No, I text her earlier, and she didn't.
I see her, Debbie.
I'm here.
Hi, Debbie.
Hello. I'm at the bowling alley, so I hope it's not loud. I just wanted to, I'm sure some people have seen it, but Salem Hospital was purchased yesterday by Inspira Hospital. So it's, it's the best news I've heard in a long time. So, so sometime, I'm sure we'll find out what their plans are in the next year. But it did go through, the Attorney General did approve it, so it's, it's a done deal. So, and the reason it's so exciting for me is two things. One, we can have a closer hospital that we can respond to instead of running all over the place. And also, hopefully, and maybe you guys can lobby for this as well, that they have a maternity again because we don't have one in Salem Hospital. So we desperately need a maternity unit in our area. So other than that, I do have, I think, three, three people going to E M T starting in January. I know you mentioned something about some extra money. If for some reason, there's something that can be done, there is a, the New Jersey Training Fund pays a great portion of the tuition. But there is a $500 techno, technology fee that usually the students have to pay for themselves. So if there's even, you know, a couple hundred dollars that could go toward that, that would be wonderful. So that's entirely up to you guys. It's not promised to them because I don't usually ask for that portion. But every year, it's going up and up, so now it's up to $500. So that's money they have to pay out of pocket. So other than that, everything's going well, and we're just busy. So, but any questions for me?
Questions from those of council? That's it, Debbie. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you very much for a good year, and we'll continue on. Have a good Christmas.
Moving on to attorney report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You will be hearing more from the executive session on a number of issues, but it is the end of the year, and looking back.
Can't hear you. Or you guys might be frozen, one or the other.
Yeah.
No, I can't hear either.
Yeah, you gotta, y'all must be froze because the mayor ain't moved in about.
No.
I know she ain't looking at Rob that hard.
Yeah, she's frozen. Can everyone hear me?
Can everyone hear me? Okay, okay, we're having connection uh issues in the courtroom. The reception is very bad in here. Looks like it's coming back though, so give us a minute, everyone. All right, well, we're gonna proceed. Um, Mr. Tarver, they couldn't hear you, could you repeat what you said in your report?
Can they hear me now?
Yeah, you guys can hear Mr. Tarver now, correct? You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So Charlene said yes, but we can't hear her speaking.
Okay, uh. I don't know when it went out, but what I was saying is that significant uh and important. Uh, part of what I wanted to let everyone know is that there's no major litigation. Uh, that has come into the borough for this year, and that is a significant thing, a big thing, because. Major litigation is one of the things that eats up a municipality's budget very quickly. And just along the line of budgeting, we've been very fortunate, uh even within our budgeting for uh legal expenses. And that we've stayed below what was projected of our use, uh and we've also not had to use what are called changeable. Other words, sometimes you have to change and augment the amount of. To the attorneys who are are representing the municipality. We had some litigation that we came into the year with during this year, uh but fortunately, we we didn't have to 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 augment. Uh, any of that, we had some very, 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 very good settlements on some cases that were already outstanding. I have to commend uh a number of the law firms, uh and those are law firms that that uh I didn't select, but they're. Uh, the Barker Law Firm, who I've known uh for for many, many years and worked with, they did a fantastic job for us. And the number of cases a year, um. And uh, you know, I think that's uh all some things that we intend to improve on going into next year. Uh, we have a lot of initiatives and projects we want to move forward on, uh and um. You know, I I I I have to tell you, I'm really appreciative of the support that I received from both the mayor and council. In this past year in dealing with the matters that we've dealt with. Uh, the council's been very receptive when we've talked about our settlements and things of that nature. Uh, Councilwoman Scarpese has been very on top of things with the Jif matters, uh letting us know exactly what was going on, so. Uh, we've we've been very fortunate this year, and uh that's my report until such time as we convene.
Thank you, Mr. Tarver.
In significant and in real litigation before the Superior Court, I think there are.
Okay. All right, moving to Mayor comments. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony that we had, it was Saturday, December eleventh, but we had to reschedule it because of the weather. To Sunday, December twelfth, so I just want to thank you, uh say thank you to everyone who participated. Everyone who came out and helped decorate the park, donated their time on Christmas lights. Um, thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Claus for the surprise appearance, we weren't expecting it. Um, you know, thank you to Bishop Freddie Washington and Pastor Zachary Taylor for coming out. And praying and everyone, all the residents that came out to sing, drink uh hot apple cider with us. And hang our special ornaments. I just want to remind everyone that please feel free to to hang your ornaments on the tree. If it's a memory of someone, or if you just made a nice ornament that you want to share with the town for a while, I'm still making ornaments, so I do plan on hanging more. Um, so I just want to encourage everyone to do that. Also, um, the Elks Lodge had a Christmas party Saturday, December eleventh. And they reached out to me and asked me to recommend some families to them that they could give gifts to children. And um, so I just want to say thank you, that was a a very nice event, they sent me lots of pictures today, so I'll be sharing those. On social media, so thank you for your support, Elks Lodge members. Um, for our community, and also, as Councilman Carter mentioned, we had a great toy giveaway this past Saturday. Thank you to the Recreation Committee that volunteered their time to back up all those toys, we had lots of toys. Thank you to the volunteers, the sponsors, thank you uh to House of Right uh for coming out and helping us. Um, with the toy giveaway, uh thank you, we had lots of sponsors, in fact. We still have sponsors who are currently donating toys still. Um, there are some children that are currently quarantined and who couldn't make it to um to the toy giveaway. So we'll be uh delivering toys to those children uh either Thursday or Friday. Um, some of the sponsors are still dropping off toys, we'll also be donating toys to uh some of the kids, delivering. Toys to the kids in uh the gardens, Pin Village and Silver Run as well, so I'll post more information.
I will uh post more uh information on my Facebook page. I am still taking names, yes, still taking names, everyone. Um, if you're gonna send me names, make sure that you give me the gender and the ages of the child, and we'll. Keep the uh delivery toys till we run out. And if anyone likes to volunteer to help me make those deliveries, that would be much appreciated. Okay. Moving to old business, we have nothing.
Can I just add on the uh the light, the Christmas light thing?
Yes.
So I have uh one of our uh residents had shields that come out after dark, uh like kind of um. Talked Grinch to go out and and looking at the lights. And she said once she got out there, that she sat there an hour and froze, but she said it consumed her, she could not leave. Then she called me like a couple days later and told me that she had somebody coming from out of town. Just come to also view the lights with her. Because uh, you know, apparently like this really has touched a lot of people, and um what a great idea from everyone, so congratulations.
Yes, and and I mean that Mr. Carter couldn't remember was Jeremy Lyon. Oh, okay, okay. Um, I, you know, I also want to go back to the tree lighting, see, real quick. That true, the the process of getting that tree to stand up. Thank you to Director Rivera and Wade. My husband, they, if you guys could have seen what they went through to get that. I had to bag the truck up, they had the tree hanging off the back of the truck, we had to stand it up that way, then they had to run and. So, you know, get it, dig a hole, it was crazy. And then um afterwards, the Councilman Rambo came and helped so, you know, stabilized a little more and. We put all the lights up, um again, um, members of Recreation, um. Angie net, her husband, who always comes through, he came and helped sing, like, I mean, it was just a joint effort. It was your planet tree. The, well, you know what? At, when I saw what they went through getting that tree in the hole. Cause it doesn't have any, you know, I didn't get the ball. So next year we'll get the ball, when uh Councilwoman Martin and I go out and pick a twenty-foot tree again. I will make sure we have the ball. Um, but we also had a surprise visit from the Grinch. Which was really cool, Mr. Martin, thank you.
I thought him saying it was going to get in a wrestle match for a minute.
It was a lot of fun, so I just look forward to next year, we'll have more stuff, we're just gonna keep adding more and more. Next year, we're gonna decorate downtown, it's just, it's a process, those lights are very, very expensive. So, we'll just keep adding.
Also, I don't know if anybody noticed, but um we were able to resurrect one of our angels that used to hang on the poles. And uh, we hung that up out there, uh there are three left, um. Council President Mincy had told me uh where she thought they might be, and we dug them out, and um. I was able to salvage one to light, but we're going to work on the other two, so we have three angels for next year.
And also, um Eleanor Washington, she drove up, saw out pretty good park look. And she said she had bought an angel for another project, but our park looked so beautiful. That she wanted to put the angel in our park, so it just added to it, so thank you to her too for that. Um, everyone who came out and put balls on the tree. All right, that's all I have. Um, moving to new business, we have an add-on and adoption of Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash twelve. Dash one four five, that is a resolution authorizing refund of property deposit. And we also have an add-on and adoption of Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one four six. That is a resolution authorizing the creation of an abandoned properties account. May I have a motion? Uh, for Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one forty-five and two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one forty-six. May I have a motion by consent? Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpese, may I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin, Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All of our motion passes.
Can we have somebody explain Resolution one forty-six? Yes.
Sure. Yeah, um, we have an ordinance regarding abandoned properties, uh and how abandoned properties are dealt with. Uh, and so there is a process, I know a number of people have been concerned about abandoned properties within the borough. Uh, and uh how we actually go about trying to address the problem of the abandoned properties to get. People to make sure that they need some sort of action to be able to move toward. Remediating or dealing with those properties, so the abandoned properties ordinance which we have uh indicates that. The individuals who uh have these properties have to register the properties. And they have to pay a fee for the registration of the properties. Uh, here before, we did not have a account for the abandoned property uh funds and fees that are paid. This re- this resolution authorizes the creation of that particular account. So that we can forward with uh actually redeeming funds. Or taking these uh under the Abandoned Properties Act.
It's required by just that you have a separate account.
Yes.
It has to be accounted for in certain ways, and it can, money can need to be spent in certain ways.
So I just wanted to explain, cause I just want people to understand that we are on the abandoned properties. And that uh this money is used to um, it can be used, I know, to tear them down. If we need to or fix them up, so it doesn't feel burden of taxpayers. So, I just wanted to make sure they know that we are, you know, next year. Ain't gonna say nothing now, but next year when the grass and stuff start growing, it's gonna be a big issue on what we don't.
Yeah, they're they're restricted funds, they can only be spent.
As you said.
Yeah. We'll take your money. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Okay, all right, we are moving into public portion.
There was a vote on this? No, cause again, it's the question came after, so I.
Under new business, um. I think, I thought that we were gonna bring everyone up to speed, and that is what it's for, I, Mr. Brown was issued a rice name. And since he's been asked to be heard in public, I.
Under new business?
Which we need to do, you need to bring a a motion, new business to discuss the.
How's that summation?
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion that's being made is just so we're clear, a motion to discuss. The employment status of the business administration.
Yes, and actually, I I, we discussed that not everyone was up to speed about the conversation. That was between Council President Russell, Mr. Tarver, the mayor and myself. So the four of us had a discussion, but I think everyone in council has to be brought up to speed, including Mr. Brown.
I had not intended to. Let me just say.
Second first, right?
Part of my discussion is a discussion as the attorney, so. My portion. But if if you're going to hold the discussion, it's fine. I won't be, in terms of of anything that I said, you need to discuss going forward. We can't do an executive, because he has Rice notice and has opted to have it put here. I'm just saying that any portion that deals with me and my advice cannot.
So you'd have to do that individually to everyone, or like how would everyone know what? The three of us elected officials know, like all the elected officials should know the same thing.
It it depends on what what the question is, but let's, let's, let's have the motion, she's made the motion, is there a second?
Okay, so is there a second?
This is a motion to bring on um a, I guess it is a resolution from the floor. To discuss the employment status of the business administrator.
Either discussion or a debate.
But it's 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 discussion.
Is it discussion?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So you're in, you're in open session, um. And just so that everyone's aware of council members and otherwise, um. Apparently, the business administrator was Rice notice. Meaning that he was given the opportunity to have the matters dealing with his employment status heard in closed session. Uh, and as case law allows, you can opt to have it heard in public session. Uh, as opposed behind closed doors, and he has opted to. Open sessions.
Council President, myself, the mayor, and our attorney had a discussion. Last Thursday about Mr. Brown's employment status, and that's. My problem with that was that. Council is not fully informed, and so. I believe that since we cleared the air, and now the Council President and myself are informed about the status of things. I think that everyone should be privileged to the same information. And that's why I brought the motion to the floor, and I included Mr. Brown, because I think that he needs to be informed too. It's regarding himself, so that's only fair.
The only problem, just gonna say this, the only problem I have with that, just so you know, is that. My understanding is that I thought it was made very clear that we were in the process of putting something together. With regard to this, and that it was not supposed to be a public.
I didn't make it public, that was Mr. Brown's choice.
Well. I didn't, it wasn't ripe from my perspective for it, for for moving forward, but that's, that's neither here nor there. I have to exempt any advice that I gave. Because I don't want it to now open my advice to you yourself this point.
Um, I just said, I just want to say that during our discussion. You and Council President made, reached your concerns, and I explained to both of you that. We were working things out with Mr. Brown as as far as the reservation, the negotiation in terms of this package.
I mean, that's fine, I just think that everybody should know the same thing, because that was my problem, I didn't know. And I don't think that it's fair that I know and nobody else knows.
Well, actually, uh, the other council members do know that he's writing off resigning, and we're working on.
I.
I wasn't expecting Rice.
I was talking to Ms. Martin, and I talked to Mr. Giordano, and I think I talked to Mr. Ray, and they. I was talking to Ms. Martin and I talked to Mr. Giordano and I think I talked to Mr. Rango and they did not.
They didn't know when his date would be to resign. Uh, they didn't know that.
Mr. Giordano, is that correct? You didn't know the date or you didn't know that it was happening?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Giordano was aware of the situation because you three had been discussing it.
I think we just need to update everybody and, you know.
So the.
Let me just say this because I, I, I'm, I'm not very comfortable right now because what we've done is we've what, what I think should have been partially part of the negotiation to someone's status um, into the records and I, I don't know that's.
But that's not our choice. That's Mr. Brown's.
It's, 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 it's your choice in that the, the negotiation has not been completed.
Well, we're not talking about negotiation. I just hope that, like, well, what happened that day?
That's what I'm, that's.
I don't want you to separate what happened that day from the fact that there was a negotiation dealing with Mr. Brown's status. And that's all I'm saying.
I, I'm, I'm saying the same thing that I said to both of you on Friday. I said, we are working out the negotiation package with Mr. Brown. We're working on a resignation date and I'm saying the same thing to you guys. I didn't know you were rice noticing him when we had that conversation. I wasn't aware.
That was before we had the conversation.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that you were doing that before we had the conversation. I wasn't aware that when we had the conversation that that was occurring. So my discussion with, with both of you was that we're working on a package for him and negotiating his terms for exit and that I will provide you with a date once we work on that date. And I think I said to you that we will be working on that date probably this week. And I will let you both know as well as the rest of council, what his terms were, what he came up with and when his departure date would be.
Well, that's, we can take the bit and I can put out the information that I said. And then if you wanted to put out the information that you said, that's fine.
Okay, well, I think.
What, what's all are we talking?
Yeah, that's.
We have to take a bit of whether we're gonna discuss this. We're in discussion right now. We haven't taken a bit yet. Of whether we want to talk about this, right? I mean, that's at the point right now. First, I get discussion and now vote. I mean, we're discussing everything. You probably touched a bit.
Madam Clerk, can you do roll call to go into discussion?
Yes.
I have a question before, as part of discussion, this discussion. I want to be clear that me agreeing, me signing the rice.
Yeah, before you, before you think we need to, to do this.
No, I need to clarify this. Because two things have just been said.
Okay.
For one thing, when Ms. Scarpese just said, um, if there was a change between the time that Rice notice was requested and the time that it was delivered to me. If there was a change in between those two periods, then that could have been rescinded. So now, when I signed that rice notice.
I'm not sure what the changes.
Um, when I signed a rice notice, I signed for a public discussion about uh, to address concerns with my, uh, either employment or performance. This conversation has, has, has diverted into something that uh, I was unaware would be discussed. Because this is not what was shared with me.
Before we go any further, hold on, before we go any further, let's do roll call to, to discuss this.
Well, I'm a computer. Well, let me see if I can clear the confusion. Where you are right now, you have brought forward a motion to discuss his employment status. All right, so before we begin discussing the employment status and I, I was trying to steer the, the, the conversation toward the, the nuts and bolts of getting there, but before you discuss the actual status, then you have to have a vote. In order to say that that is what you want to do to discuss the status. Right here before we've been talking about where is it proper to have any markets or whatever, but what you want to do is for, for Councilman Scarpese to discuss the status of his employment. So you'll be voting now to be able to have your discussion of the status. So she's made the, she's made the motion. There was a second.
Yep.
Just.
I think we discussed too much before we talked this.
We have to do this, this, so, so you have to vote to discuss his employment status. So uh, the clerk can call.
Councilman Carter?
We're, and this is the vote to only discuss the employment status.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Councilman Giordano?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty? Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes. Um, my understanding of the statute uh, forty A nine one thirty-eight, which regards, which is in regard to the BA's uh, employment status. It specifically talks about a termination. It does not talk about a resignation. However, when I, I spoke to Mr. Sistelli, he said a resignation, um, he would approve for us to follow that statute. And what it says is that if you're terminated, you get three months' pay. The length of your employment is at the discretion of council. So the person could leave immediately or they could work for three months. Discussions that we had is that, that there has to be a transition period. So after the resignation, if it were to occur on the thirty-first, Mr. Brown could work for three months and be paid, or he could not work for three months and be paid and either way would be approved by Mr. Sistelli. Um, we also, at one point, had submitted a schedule M under our memory and of, of understanding, which it was signed off by the council president. And what it does is it asks for a transition plan. And it was approved by Mr. Sistelli that it was sufficient. And I can get away with the details of that if Mr. Tarver thinks that that's appropriate, what was in the schedule M.
Let me just qualify one or two things with regard to position. Uh, Mr. Sistelli's position was that there'd be a schedule M with a, with a bona fide uh, plan for moving forward. In the absence of a business administrator, yeah, the business administrator attorney.
Yes.
We, we, we're kind of moving between two things here, termination and resignations and uh, I'm, I'm just trying to be, trying to give a legal portion. So there has to be a plan and what was discussed last week was the plan and what the plan was. So that's, I'm just trying to up to speed with that. I, I don't know that the plan has even been fully developed at this point.
That plan is going to develop to the satisfaction of our state monitor. It has not been written out in detail. It doesn't have, um, the plan has to include a comp package, uh, benefits, probably a health harness agreement and a transition plan. Anyway, it has to be pretty detailed. But I've also found that in, in order to advertise for a position, the position actually has to be open.
That's not, that's not, excuse me, I believe we said that that is not that. Whoever told you that has a misunderstanding of what the law is.
It was the, it was Mr. Samru from the Personnel Division of JIF.
Mr. Samru, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say this now and on the record. Individuals from the JIF who are giving legal advice to members of council are acting outside of the scope of their position. And they place the municipality in jeopardy when they provide legal advice. Not only that, but it is interference of the right of the duly appointed council to provide advice to a municipality. A matter which I have litigated before in other municipalities. In fact, they cannot do that. It's an interference with the attorney client relationship. No, no, that's, that's what could be informed. It's another thing for them to provide advice. And I would be dealing with the JIF personally for that. I would be letting them know that that's a problem because they hold responsibility when they give advice and somehow there's harm that's caused to members of the municipality or the taxpayers of that municipality. So I, I, I have a problem with the idea that outside people not knowing the full scope of matters within the municipality are giving legal advice to individuals within the municipality. If they're lawyers, they are functioning unethically. And I'll find out if they are. If they're individuals who are not lawyers, then they have no business even entering into the discussion. So that's, that's what I want to say about those persons who are giving advice outside. I've listened to a discussion of what people have said outside. Number one, they shouldn't be doing. Besides that, there are some very serious implications for them having done and I'll, I'll address that. But let me just say this, there is no legal jeopardy for having done.
My, my question.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Martin.
Um, I guess, why is Mr. Brown being terminated?
Nobody said that.
I'm sorry?
Nobody says that.
Well, what, I guess she's asking, why do people want, why are we even discussing this? If, if it's not an issue, that's what she's basically trying to find out. What's the issue?
Because you're asking me to vote on something and I can't vote on it without all the information. I just want to know what, what are.
First of all, we already voted that we can have a discussion and we're not talking about termination. We're talking about a resignation. Which is.
I'm wanting to resume.
Okay, so why is he resi- why is he resigning?
You can ask Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown.
To resign. Why, why, why did you bring up the motion for him to resign? Why did you give him a rice letter?
Because there was an ad in the League of Municipalities advertising for a BA for Pennsboro. And when I saw that, I wanted to know why it was there. That's how the discussion started.
I, I find, I find that to be, I, excuse my language, I'm not gonna curse, but I find that to be BS. Because you guys have been talking about this for months. Another thing I have an issue with, another thing I have an issue with is you, before you started speaking, you said you called everybody on council, but you excluded one name. And that's the name that's speaking. And that's a prob- part of the issue that I have with this council is that you do, y'all do stuff behind each other's back and y'all get in y'all little groups and y'all discuss things together and you'll reach out to certain people, but my phone number been the same since nineteen ninety-eight. And it ain't ringing out one time with any of this discussion. But I've been hearing about it for months. So you can't say something about some, you seen something in a paper when it's been being discussed for the past two, three months. So let's call a spade a spade. Stop the procrastination, stop the procrastination and put the stuff on the floor of why y'all want you, Carol and Ron, why y'all want Sean to resign.
There is no reason other than we, other than we share a different vision for Pennsboro.
There's no reason?
There's no cause.
If there's no reason, we shouldn't be discussing it then.
There is an ad on the League of Municipalities that advertises for a BA. So let me say, Sarah, let me speak to that.
Just, you just gave me three reasons. You just gave me three different reasons in, in two minutes. You telling me there is no reason. Come on, get your story straight.
Councilman Carter, hold on one second, please. The reason why there's an ad on the League of Municipalities is because this has been discussed with you and Carol. We had a discussion. We had a discussion a few months ago and you both said that you wanted Sean to resign.
All right.
So in hoping, I've asked you guys a few times to get together with him and meet with him hoping that you all could resolve your issues or whatever it is that your, your expectations were. You could tell him what your expectations were and you, and you all can resolve it, you know, like adults. That's what I hope. But I see that it's not happening and you guys want him to resign. I had a conversation with him and he agreed. He said, I don't want to, but I will resign if it's gonna help the municipality move forward because this going back and forth is, is stopping progress. So with that being said, I decided to go ahead and advertise for the position because before he can, he can leave, there has to be an interim. And there needs to be a proper replacement. So that in the borough cannot operate. Now that we have a borough administrator, we cannot operate without one. So that's why I advertised for him. That's why there's an ad on the League of Municipalities for him.
And the question was that nobody was aware of it until we, until I saw it. I was looking at the police ones.
Right, and, and we did discuss that Friday about better communication between all of us. We had that conversation. But what surprised me is in us having that conversation and I told both you and Council President Minty, I said, I would do a better job of communicating with both of you than informing you of things. Me as the mayor, you have to do the same for me. And as we're having that conversation, neither one of you even alerted me that you did a rice notice for, for Mr. Brown. I didn't even know about it. I didn't find out about it till I got the, the agenda. So again.
I thought that everyone should have the same information.
They should, but, but it, it goes for everybody. You guys should communicate with me too as well. So we discussed that. We discussed about the, the ad being advertised. We discussed that we can move forward, we'd have a better communication. We discussed that. But what I will say is neither one of you told me while we're having that conversation, neither one of you even mentioned, oh, we sent, we rice noticed Sean. I didn't know that. So.
We did rice notice.
I said, I thought.
No, I said you guys didn't mention that to me. I know, I'm getting, I'm saying we did rice notice, but I thought we were gonna take it back. We were trying to wait and see you, if there was one heavy conversation. Cause I could have went either way with this, with you um, telling everybody and the, working out the plans for him.
You guys didn't even give me an opportunity to.
I, I, I'm not saying. You listen to me. I'm not saying, I'm not paying for that. Cause I, I could have waited for that. I could have waited for the plan. And I wasn't even thinking about taking a rice notice back. And I, I haven't even been off yet. So I haven't even done because usually I can meet and give a sharing and all, I haven't done any of that. And when I looked on the thing, I didn't see, the one thing I seen, then I seen it off. So I thought it was taken off because I didn't see it on here. So I, it wasn't that I lied to you. We did talk about waiting for you. We didn't, and we had already put it in before we even had our meeting. I just want to get that part straight because I didn't, I didn't, I'm not calling against what we said about communication. I'm, I'm still there with the communication. It's just the way it went. So I, I'll take the blame for not even calling to get it off, but I've been working ever since. And when I say we're busy, we're busy. And by the time I get off, it's, it, I, I didn't even think about the rice notice. I know what you told y'all. I was gonna talk to him. You can get back to us.
That's exactly.
That's what you, you did tell us that.
Even outside the rice notice, why hasn't council talked as a whole regarding this issue period? Why has it been, why has it, why? I can't hear you.
Race notice.
Say that again?
You cannot talk about personnel issues unless you give a race notice.
So why?
You would be able to, Councilman Carter, the only way that you would be able to is you couldn't do it through the committee setup, which we've talked about, which several people can talk amongst themselves about that. Uh, which you cannot talk as a whole. But you can disseminate information through the committee setup that we, that we have.
Any, any, any type of, any type of way, but once again, as, as I, as I said went through the email before, I, I'm not gonna repeat that, but this is the first time, once again, that I'm hearing anything about any of this stuff. When council could have been, went and talked, but Ms. Scarpese is talking to Ron and Ron is going up the Rambo's job, talking to him. Everybody's talking, but nobody's talking as a whole. So y'all, y'all making excuses of why we can't talk, but talking's being talked about behind closed doors.
Can you explain again? You can't talk as a whole.
So, so Ms. Councilman Carter, what, what I think you're saying is that you were never, no one ever came to talk to you. So.
Not, not a single phone call about anything, not one. She, when she first started talking, she said, I called, I called Charlene. I called Ron, I called Rambo, but never once did she say I called John. Why? Because she. Why? Because she didn't.
I'm not sure you're on any of my committees.
If, if that what, being on a committee has nothing to, we're not, we're not voting on a committee. We're voting on, we're, you're trying to get somebody removed from a job. So that has nothing to do, I doubt everybody you went and talked to was on that same committee also. So don't, don't throw committee in it because the committee has nothing to do with nothing. Ain't no committee that are all for everybody on council on something besides me. There is no committee for that.
Well, if I can add, if I can add, I was, it was brought to my attention a while ago that, um, you wanted to, basically how it was said, get rid of Sean. And that is basically how it was said to me. I then asked the question, the same question I'm asking today, for what purpose? I have not to today have gotten a direct answer. Some of the answers I heard sounded personal. Um, so, wait, can I finish? So what I'm saying is, I'm saying the same thing today. And, and what I said, and I'll, I'll say it. What I said was, well, I don't agree, give me the information, then I can, I, I can cast a vote. But without the proper information, I will not. So my answer that day was no, because I did not get the proper information. I also asked, could council talk with Mr. Brown? And the response was, um, I don't want to do that. So that's the last I heard was then. So you said you, you, I knew about it, but that's, that's when I knew. But at the same time. Excuse me?
There is no reason, it's without cause.
Oh, so just terminate him just because?
There's two classifications, there's with cause and then there's without cause.
Just gave four different reasons in the last twenty minutes of why you want this man gone.
I mean, just, just break before you speak, Mr. Brown, sorry. I've provided each member of council with my legal, right, this entire situation, which I'm not. Uh, but each member of council, I've provided with my, my legal, I did. I'm not providing here because I cannot break that, it forever broken. But all of you know what my position has been. So to receive advice of council about this entire situation.
I think that we should let Mr. Brown. It's.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, just anticipating this conversation, I prepared a statement. I would like to create, that's okay, without interruption. And, um, I just want to say for the record that even though I'm quite a government, uh, I don't. I reelect myself, so I'm all. Good evening. I believe that this discussion is another step of you to undermine the role of business administrator, embarrass me personally and force me to resign simply because Ms. Mitzi, Mrs. Scarpese and Mr. Giordano do not have four votes to terminate. I also believe that accusations about me are simply a retaliation for me identifying multiple violations of local finance law, among other laws. I also believe that exaggerated or manufactured accusations are part of the bigger plot to undermine the mayor and through her agenda, and through her, an agenda that has been established to fix what is broken in this borough. On the evening of October eighteenth, I was asked for my resignation by Council President Mitzi and Councilman Giordano. In that conversation in my office, Madam Mayor, I told them no. I asked, I also asked why. I was told that they were giving advice that they could not tell me what their reasons are or even explain expectations of me. I was also told that it wasn't anything about my performance, but it just wasn't a good fit. I'm not what they're looking for. They mentioned they were doing me a favor to allow me to resign, so I could avoid a blemish on my employment record. After they both left, Mr. Giordano returned to get something. Ms. Mitzi had left in her office. He came back in, he told me that he didn't really want me to ask me to resign, he, he just really didn't. Subsequently, there have been seven council meetings, including two work sessions. My performance, where concerns were not discussed openly or in closed session. But just me being asked to resign in itself was one of a series of due process violations that a few council members had made. I believe me sitting here today is reflection of a continuation of a lack of strategy and ignorance to effective policy. I was asked to resign, there was never a termination form, also known as attachment N of the M O U for from the DCA's Division of Local Government Services. The foreign that Ms. Scarpese mentioned earlier was produced after October eighteenth, not before. That document was included in email from the monitor that went to Council President six weeks prior to August nineteenth. Madam Mayor, I dispute any accusation that I've been supporting it and no one can claim that I'm the council. The strongest argument the council can offer is the same that I did. This borough government needs more capacity, more people, better systems and more money. All of which has been proposed by me, the business administrator. This is why I work fifty hours a week, in the office, driving around this one square mile small city, checking out complaints and old calls and emails throughout weekends and evenings. This is why I am proud that under the leadership of Mayor Thomas, I work with other borough staff to introduce the twenty-five thousand dollar violence reduction. Support the creation of an emerging cannabis industry that will bring jobs, occupy now vacant buildings and also allow us to fully return to private projects. To identify grant money, operational money for new software and management systems. Correct, correcting deficits and wage neglect, salary adjustments and eliminating state's recovery plan. If this staff and council could do these things about a business administrator, they would have hopefully been accomplished already. Unfortunately, progress has been blocked. How so? Multiple vendors and staff were told not to report to the administrator despite state statutes, municipal ordinances, council rules, case law, legal opinions, state aid, all in support of a management system where council remains in its crucial important legislative and budgetary functions and where I manage police, fire, EMT, code of course, housing, zoning. Finance. Earlier I mentioned retaliation, over what? Now, I have created a file that has all emails and documents referenced in what I'm about to say to you. I will share that folder after my statement, so you'll get this in your email. Please let me know if you have any issues opening, you should be able to open up all the documents. I'll also share a written version of this statement with the governing body. And if you may, I'll sit on the side here. I'm going to outline exactly what I believe issues are that have led me to be asked to resign. And I got to say, before I read this, a termination and being asked to resign is kind of the same thing. They're, they're in, 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 in multiple ways. So here we go. Councilwoman Scarpese, I'm going to start with you. Madam Mayor, the councilwoman has met with a staff member that happens to also be an active member of the Democratic Party to discuss political items. Our employee handbook adopted August twenty-first, twenty eighteen, has a political activity policy which says on page seventeen, employees are prohibited from engaging in political activities while performing their public duties, from using borough time, supplies or equipment in any political activity. Any violation of this policy must be reported to the supervisor, department head, mayor, council designee or the borough solicitor. I reported this the same day I witnessed it. On November tenth, on November tenth, Ms. Scarpese interfered with the sacred process of our audit. Walking into this courtroom while auditor was reviewing documents, she gave ideas, asked questions and stood close to the auditor. She did this after I suggested to her by email at eleven eleven A M. That Mrs. Scarpese addressed any concerns in a committee meeting, instead she interfered. Mayor, as you and councilmember remember, I entered the governing bodies to this at three twenty-five P M on the same day. This interference was not only inappropriate, but it made it even, but made even stranger since Ms. Scarpese is a certified public accountant and certified tax accountant. She knows better. But instead of following the A I C P A Code of Professional Conduct, she responded pointing fingers at me, not accepting responsibility. What makes this incident even more sad is that Ms. Scarpese never actually helped this administration deal with the issues that are in previous audits. It was my hope, before Ms. Scarpese stopped having governance meetings, that she could guide this administration through standards and guidance as provided by the Bureau of Internal Accounting Standards Board. Instead, she put her license in jeopardy. But that's not all. Mrs. Scarpese skipped several points on a twenty nineteen audit and repeatedly asked me to aggressively hunt down a community member over an unpaid loan. She then accused me of insubordination. On October twenty-sixth at eight oh nine A M, Mrs. Scarpese indicated that she was aware that her attorney would handle the matter, yet she still cites this in her disapproval. According to an article published in April sixteen, twenty fifteen, quote, on April seventh, Rinder said she received affidavit signed by borough resident, and I'm not going to say his name, whose name appears on Scarpese's petition. He said the signature was not his, according to the deputy clerk's decision. So the same person who Ms. Scarpese had a political conflict with, I've been now put in position to exercise a political vendetta, which I, of course, am not willing to do. Ms. Scarpese eventually comes to Borough Hall giving staff orders suggesting that she will sit by and get tips. It's not her role. This is in violation of council rules adopted by this council September seventh and also in violation of the Jersey statute forty A colon nine dash one three six. Those same council rules states in Article Five, Section Three, that council members shall familiarize themselves with ethical standards in municipal government and shall act in accordance with those standards. She has done this as recent as today, reaching out to Assistant Treasurer instead of me directly, following a chain of command that's been well established. She certainly has a right to ask questions and seek information to make informed decisions. However, there is a council approved process for this. Ms. Scarpese has violated ethics rules, bringing up several issues related to the Sewage Authority. Since her husband serves on that board and she serves on council, she is prohibited from participating in anything that has to do with the Sewage Authority. She was told this and I was advised not to participate in anything related to her and the authority to avoid me being complicit in her violations. Now, what am I referring to specifically? Ms. Scarpese repeatedly asked me to ask Carl Washington to resign from the Sewage Authority. For one, she was not in an ethical position to ask. Second, if there were any concerns, Mr. Washington's position, to Mr. Washington's, uh, position to residency, that matter was worthy authority to handle, not me as the administrator. And finally, no individual councilperson can or should give me direct orders to do anything, but she actually hand wrote a letter, drag for me. Mrs. Scarpese informed me of interest in Sewage Authority buying borough owned property for one dollar. Her husband told me in my office that the property was coincidentally next to property that Scarpese's own. I asked both her and her husband for a formal request in writing. Once I did, the address of the property changed. I want to note that she advocated to give Sewage, the Sewage Authority a property for one dollar, yet told me to tell Happy Tap Reimannity, when they asked for property for one dollar, to get in line with everybody else. In a meeting with the state monitor, right near at this table, the wildlife development issue came up. In that meeting, Ms. Scarpese boldly told Mrs. Mitzi, Ms. Mitzi, Mr. Sestelli, the mayor, myself, that she called the developer pretending to be a store interested in leasing a building in the new development. Coercion is legal. However, as the owner of a convenience store, it is a conflict of interest for her to participate in discussions about a competitor. Next up, Mr. Giordano. When I told Mr. Giordano that there was an employee that was not being responsive to me as his supervisor and not sharing his schedule, I was told just let that person get away with it so he doesn't quit. I've been kneecapped since my first month in this position due to directions or implicit actions by this and other councilmembers named in the statement. Instead of making clear that the administrator has legal authority, I was told to let the friends of certain councilmembers get away with resisting supervision. This is another example where I'm treated as a whipping boy, as others are treated, treated as sacred cows. On several occasions by email, text and at council committee meetings, Mr. Giordano gave me direct orders to order a specific software from a specific vendor. On Wednesday, September twenty-second, Mr. Giordano told me by text in part, had, quote, had this software installed on our housing office computers and for an employee to cease using his software, to cease signing in and out from home. Please do this immediately or within the next five working days, end quote. Even after I tried to tell Mr. Giordano that the legal process is different than what he suggested, he's continued to push the exact same vendor in issue again. And as other actions, this is in violation of forty eight colon nine dash two two point five. Since members of council authorized contracts and bills yet to be, bills to be paid, they cannot also select vendors. It's a conflict of interest. And finally, Carol Mitzi, you ready? Ms. Mitzi has spent more time spreading rumors, wasting precious staff time with regular unscheduled Borough Hall visits, talking about an assortment of government and non-borough business. This is done as an attempt to manage day-to-day operations and, and telling admittedly funny yet distracting stories. With the history of yelling and intimidating people, Ms. Mitzi has not present, has not presented the chance to be told safely how disruptive this is. But this isn't no. Over a decade ago, as a councilmember, Ms. Mitzi, along with the borough, was sued in a case prophetically known as Brown versus Mitzi. Ms. Mitzi has an unfortunate history of being messy with vendors. She served on council before, received ethics training early January twenty twenty and again a few weeks ago. Issue with vendors. For example, in the middle of May twenty twenty-one, Ms. Mitzi selected, negotiated and then advocated for a particular asphalt company led by a Hensbrough native that she once worked with. Now, I'm all for local business owners having opportunities to do good work, but it's not the job of councilmembers to hire vendors. Despite what may have been good intentions, Ms. Mitzi hired the same contractor to put buildings at the Riverwalk grassy area. This is in violation of guidance from the State's Department of Environment, Environmental Protection, known as site remediation and waste management. And just to note, when you get your folder, you'll see the documentation that I'm referring to. There are several problems that the situation creates. The biggest that any, the biggest is that work is done, any invoices issued, any vendor that is hired must go through a process. When September seventh, by email, Ms. Mitzi pressured me and others on staff to pay his bill, even though we held it due to quote threshold issues. Let me be really clear what that means. Any bill that comes over a certain dollar amount, we must have documentation that if it's over two thousand seven hundred dollars and under seventeen thousand dollars, that we got three quotes. So when you have a councilmember who's doing the negotiations and hiring and not familiar with the rules, that puts us in a bad position as a borough. With fear of retaliation, I admit that I allowed the bill to be. With fear of retaliation, I admit that I allowed the bill to be paid, but it was under duress. She's also done this with a band, a DJ, and a photographer for the Juneteenth event, hoping to rectify. I asked her for the check that she had for the DJ. I asked her for the check that she had for the DJ so that I could verify everything and give it to the vendor myself, in part to explain our billing and payment process. Ms. Minty yelled at me and refused to give me the check. Council president can sign checks but not distribute them to vendors. These situations also created a potential division with council as Ms. Minty authorized spending from a budget category that another council member had through his committee assignments. And one of the strangest situations, Ms. Minty stopped landscaping work at Barbara Avenue, Barbara Avenue Park the day after she learned at a council meeting that the park should not be upgraded because all people are going to do is tear it up. She told them that I did not have the approval to hire them, when in fact that is the only truth for her.
I don't mind sitting here, but are we allowed to answer him back? Because I'm not going to sit here while he goes these lies out.
Unfortunately, he does have the floor and he has the right because he has been rise noticed about his employment.
So we get to answer back?
You, you have a right to make your statements.
Excuse me?
There's no, there can be no discussion from the or regarding any of these matters.
She told them I did not have the approval to hire them, when in fact, that is only true for her. It took me two weeks to convince the vendor to return, to finish the work. And again, the only reason she even knew the contractor was there was because it was discussed at a council meeting with the proper approvals of the appropriate committees through the structures that we have. And the next one is something that it, it really happens, right? These, these things happen right in plain view, including tonight. Ms. Minty has also interfered with the operations of several departments, telling borough staff to send reports directly to her. Let me be clear. When his council approved the business administrative position and when I started, rules changed. So for, so the procedures of information sharing did too. Nothing obviously precludes Ms. Minty or any other member of council with the mayor from asking questions. But the interference confused the staff into wondering, what do I send it to? My boss, the, this new guy for a position I've never heard of before, or do I send it to the council president who is elected and I'm no longer? As every staff person that reports to me, police, finance, code enforcement, housing, E N T, and fire for that. Some of these people have been instructed to ignore or bypass me. I'm not here to withhold that, but I do believe it should be gathered and shared strategically. When I wrote this, I wasn't aware. Okay, you know what? Give me, just give me one second. Everything that I just discussed, um, that the backup information has just been emailed to everyone.
I'm going to ask you not to email anything to anyone with regards to, to these things. I'm asking you to still hold on to your information at this point. Can you resend that?
Just recall the message. Nobody open it. Do you know how to recall it? Sean, do you know how to recall the message? Go into your set folder.
I'm there.
Open up the message. Um, where you see the icon that says move, and then next to that it says rules, one note, and action. Hit the actions dropdown menu. Hit that dropdown.
Move.
See actions?
No.
Where it says move, you should see next to move, it says rules, one note, and action.
Oh, it's in a different location. I see.
Hit the dropdown down button for action. Hit recall this message.
I don't have the option.
Are you in Outlook, Sean, or are you on the desktop?
I think that, uh, let, let me, let me, let me just be clear because I heard some, some, um, assertions that maybe something that I said wasn't, wasn't accurate. Uh, the council meetings are recorded in the minutes of those meetings. There are probably five things I could have added, but I didn't have enough. I didn't have the emails or information to back it up, and I didn't want to put it out there without the backup information. So everything that I've said, I have the information that confirms what I'm saying. The next one I want to say is that the way this conversation started is really evidence of the, of the jam that I've been put in, um, almost from day one. It, I'm not, I'm not like, you know what? I don't like this job anymore. I'm going to move on to something else. I'm going to go work somewhere else, have a job offer, so I'm going to resign. That's not how we got here. We got here through backbiting, rumors, and then ultimately, and ultimately with Mr. Giordano and Ms. Minty walking in my office asking me to resign, which was really the only, if any, that was the only thing close to performance-related, uh, conversation that I've had with this governing body. Now, I also want to be clear that the mayor is my direct supervisor. And we had tough conversations. Performance conversations about how I could do better as a business administrator. But thank God for the leadership that the Denga Thomas has, Rob Tarver, Ed Sesselli, and a few other business administrators that I had, because when you have a new position and a new person to it, we should be in concert with each other to support what we have going on in this borough. We got a lot accomplished in a year. But we kind of got a lot more if we're able to work together without the envy and the backbiting and the unnecessary activities that I've listed out.
Um, first of all, Mr. uh, Brown, you said to me once before that staff emergency, I yell and holler again. No. You said that before. Mr. Brown, we had an incident in here. I come in here to clean the courtroom because we didn't have a janitor. And I said to him, Mr. Brown, I, how long was your meeting? Is who meeting going to be? Because I want to run the suite before Logan comes in. I don't know what I did that day, and this man was verified. That's the exact way I said it to him. He ran up the steps. He called back down. They told me come to his room. I went up there. I didn't know what he wanted. He said he didn't like the way I talked to him. I said, you didn't get it any nicer. He, an argument ensued, yes, in the room. Then a few days later, what did you tell me, Mr. Brown? That I was the third person that spoke to you that way, and you need to apologize to me because you were wrong. Excuse me? Okay, number two.
Can we, can we?
No, I'm, no, because I'm going through a few things that he said. There's more I can go through, but I want to address the things that he brought up. The asphalt company, who did I work for? With the asphalt company gave us the millions that they have on Virginia Avenue to put down there. Mr. Brown and Mr.
Can I just speak to you for one, one second?
Thank you.
I just want the public to know that if you have any questions, I, please, what he said is what he said. But I was told not to respond to him. If you want to know the truth, please ask me. I don't have time to lie. I'm, I'm just ticked off because I can't explain the answers.
Council president, we still have a closed session. Please stay for a whole minute.
No, because this is going to take another twenty minutes. Because it's not fair that he is allowed to accuse us of something. We can't respond back to it.
Okay, all I want to say is that what you've listed out, if you find any violations, you should report them because that's your job and that's your obligation. I'd also like to say it, what you've just laid out is basically the reason that we can't work together and that we need to move in a different direction. You just confirmed everything that basically I've been thinking, oh, we're not the right fit. We have different visions. We have different goals and obligations, and we have to find somebody.
Not to interrupt you, but please don't say we.
I'm not speaking, I'm not including you, Mr. Carter. I think you made your position clear. But Mr. Brown has listed three people on this council that he has problems and we have problems. Machine. And I also want to tell you that there is no indication here that performance is part of this. Council has the obligation and the privilege of terminating the B A with or without cause, and that is legal language. And what you've just outlined basically tells us that we can't work together and we're not moving in the same direction. We're not having the same vision. It's like a marriage. You get a divorce. Everybody goes their own way. And the resignation part of it was the most amicable way to do this. A termination is not any, anything that anybody ever wants to do. I've hired and fired people. It's not pleasant to fire someone. Usually you come to an agreement that you part ways because you can't work together. Now, you want to report any of those violations? That's fine. That's your job. That's your obligation. That's what has to happen if you feel that they rise to that level. I don't have any fear, and I don't think Mr. Giordano or Ms. Minty have a fear that we're going to pay a penalty for that. I want to ask you directly, are you resigning? You don't have to answer, but I'm asking.
I just don't understand the rationale of using the word termination, using the word termination and then using the word resignation three sentences later after you just said yourself that they're not the same thing. Do you, do you, I understand what's going on here.
It's an amicable party versus versus a contentious.
And let me also say that in the marriage analogy, that's a great analogy. Um, and, and a divorce is, is an accurate term in that analogy. But if, if one of the people in that marriage is being abused, uh, and then the other person is both gaslighting, pretending that abuse never happened, then that, of course, is that not amicable?
Would you like me to put a motion on the floor? And see where everybody stands?
If you want to ask what, what I would like, I would like for you to do your job as a council member. I would like for you to be a good governance chair, and I'd like for you to be a kind person and honest.
Do you feel that we share the same vision?
May I just interrupt? This is not an interrogation session, but let's.
Put an end to it. Do you want me to put a motion on the floor? It's your choice.
I mean, when I ask this between you and me, I would say, I would, I would, look, I love, I love, I love this. I love the Hensbrough. And I like what we're able to accomplish you. I just want, I just wish that you could recognize how you were complicit in this and you've, and you've, and you've led this. You dragged two other people into this, and it's really unnecessary.
Mr. Brown, can I stop you for a minute?
Of course, ma'am.
Let's, let's take a five minute break, please.
Right. I think that that's great.
Five minute recess.
I like your shirt, man.
It's the only one I had nice. One of those other things. I'm not a llama.
Got to be your own person.
You got to live with it.
You gotta live with it.
Always will be a proud person, that's why I'm the one.
Alright. We are resuming, we're resuming the meeting, everyone. Is, is, is this discussion finished?
Yes. Finished.
Alright, we have an item on the agenda that we have to go back to, and that is a motion to pay the bills. Getting review of the information. Um, is there a motion on the floor at this time?
Yeah, there was already one.
Actually, so I think I just want to comment on the bill. I keep saying that Mr. Rowan is, um, meeting with client. And I'm not really sure who the client is because you can correct me if I'm wrong. Mary, you're on the planning board, and so is Mr. Giordano. I don't know that you've been informed. I don't know what these meetings with the client is, if it's not with the board. And that the board doesn't have information as to what these items are. So I can't, I, I can only assume, I don't know, but I know some type of conversation had happened with the client, which would probably be Mr. Clock. No, the client is, is somebody at the bar, because Mr. Clock is listed as the applicant. Okay. So I'm not really sure who, who he's speaking to on the planning board to inform you of the topics and whatever comes out of these discussions. And I've noticed that on the other bills that we approved. So we keep saying client. I think that as a planning board member, which I'm not, then, then you should ask for an update at least of what is being discussed on here. Because I'm not really sure that there's a good communication between Mr. Rowan and the planning board.
Has the planning board expressed any, any concern with that?
They haven't met.
Yes, yes, they have.
And how have they done that?
Well. Mr. James, who's the, uh, chairman. He had said before that he would like to see who it is that, uh, or how these bills are being generated from Mr. Rowan. And he wanted to see the bills. Before they were approved.
Who did he, who did he say that, did he, did he say that as a request?
He said that to me, and he said he was going to talk to the council about it. And then he wanted to have that done. Whether he did that or not, I don't know, I'm just telling you what the conversation was between him and I because I'm on the panel, and I'm also on the board. So he came to me and said, I don't understand these bills that are pretty out. I'd like to deal with. That's fine, if you talk to the council about it. Or go to Steve and see what, uh, what his bill is on, that's the way I left it.
It's not only the bill, it seems like, like he's meeting with people and he's a client, I don't, I'm not even sure who that is. But there's not, like, what's coming out of these meetings and how's it being presented to the planning board? Or like I said, I'm not on the planning board, but we are paying the bills.
Totally terminology for client, maybe Mr. Parker.
I, I, I think that that's, I mean, I, I understand, I'm hearing your argument with regard to client. I think that the other things are a different story because an attorney has the prerogative and the ability to meet with other people as long as it's in furtherance. Uh, his, uh, some goal of the organization for the client. What I hear you saying is you feel that there's some issue with client. So I'm looking at this bill, and I think, you know, if you're looking at uh, several things that, that say client, um, uh, what we do tend to do is we do tend to, uh, there is a ethical responsibility for these attorneys to adequately and accurately portray what they have done. So I have to give him enough doubt with regard to the proceedings. But what I would do, and I will do with this bill in the future, is I will advise him, uh, that, uh, the council would like to detail. I know some attorneys do it this way, other attorneys put fair amount of detail in, like bills have usually. With or without.
The amounts are unreasonable.
Yeah, the amounts are very small, so I would, I would just recommend that you pay, I will make, I will make the, uh.
And, and make sure that he understands that's the. And make sure that he understands that the product of these discussions should be presented to the planning board. Because what, what good is it if he's anyone that has the information? Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not convinced it's not, so we know that it's not, so I don't, I don't.
And my, my, my recommendation should speak to, and tell him to send, you know, send an email to, to the planning board members or, or say, or to Steve or something. If he's got a question about Mr. Rowan's bill, I think, you know, or to, to Sean, you know, the business administrator. I think that would be the appropriate person to speak to if he's got questions about Mr. Rowan's bill. That way we can find out what, you know, you know, get answers for him instead of Mr. Rowan submitting his bill the same way. And then every time he submits a bill, we're questioning it. Right. So I want to make sure that you're getting the information that you need from this project.
I'm sure that you just, we just need to just clarify what it is. And, and let's, uh, does, does a vote, or is a vote open?
Don't be nervous.
There's any reason for that.
Okay.
Council's already made this a term.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt and pay the bill?
So the motion has already been.
Thank you. Captain Carter?
Yes.
Captain Giordano?
Yes.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilman Raybo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
Call if I wish, yes. Thank you. Okay. Um, now we go into subtly comment, I want to remind everyone, it's eight forty-eight, so keep your, your questions or comments to three minutes. If we can't answer your question, we will definitely get back to you. And I just want to say, you know, we've had some heated discussions this evening, so I would ask that, you know, no one, you know, no disparaging comments. That's what, that's my request. Okay?
I want to talk on a couple of topics. The first is the, uh, the flood that took place on, I think it was the twenty-eighth of, uh, October. From what I could see from the flood situation, the seawall at Tom's Lane got breached. Well, it appeared that it got breached. When those seawalls got breached, the water tended to head towards the, both the pumping stations. And so we were just recycling water rather than pumping the water from Carney's Point and Pennsboro. And everybody, we got, you know, certain amount of flooding, and some people actually got four foot of water inside their houses. Like, you know, near on Delaware Avenue or, uh, one down on Delaware Drive. In, uh, some way the pumping stations are going to be protected from the river itself in the future. Not only, I know the pumping stations at Tom's Lane and Bell Street were, and I think they're still struggling at getting a pump for Delaware Avenue. But, uh, those are things that have to be considered in the future because especially with the rising, rising tide, and now with the breaches coming over to Seawall there at both locations, we're gonna have to probably reinforce the seawall. I hate to say it. And that would be a project we're future to be looking at by our engineer, I don't know if the engineer is on Zoom or not.
No, he's not. Um, Mr. Brown, is that, the engineer provided a report for the flooding issues, right? Can that be shared with the members of the public?
It is a public document, so.
Okay, um, we can e- email that to you so that you can see, because I, I believe that's.
Oh, yeah, so sharing for that.
Yeah. I'd like a copy of that, too.
She just said I have it, I'll send it to you.
Oh, okay, I know you're.
No, right, right, and I'm saying, he just says, you like share. I'm going ahead, share with that, so we can.
Alright. Whatever, it doesn't matter.
That way you, that way you can see, because all, because all of these, uh, all of these issues are being addressed, and I believe that's included in the report. So that way at least you'll have something in front of you so we can see what, what we're addressing.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there been any progress in getting a new pump to Delaware Avenue? Or has money been, has it been granted to, uh, rebuild the pump there or, uh, or the new pump in Delaware Avenue?
Okay.
Because they have no, no pump there at this point.
Miss Maxwell, the reason why I said something everyone's faces, uh, the last council meeting, we talked about this issue for like forty-five minutes.
Okay, yeah.
So, how about this? How about this, how about I send you a report tonight or tomorrow, email it to you. I know you're an engineer, and then I'm, I'm curious what your insights are anyway, since you, since you were the chair of the Public Rescue Committee. And then we can, uh, we can talk about it, and you can give any feedback that you have, see if there's any, any input that you have that could move to our vote.
Okay, I would appreciate that. And the second.
That's, that's three minutes.
Oh, okay. Right, I have one issue, okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, was it?
My name is Joyce Martin.
Hello, Ms. Martin.
I'm Joyce Martin, forty-one, trying to speak Pennsboro. I just have a couple of questions I wanted to ask. Um, I wanted to know, I heard this girl, she said her vision was not the same as, um, the business administrator. Where are they so broad that you couldn't seem to come together?
You heard, right? Like, I don't really want to comment anymore, but you, you.
Okay, yeah, I get you.
And I apologize, I have to advise council not to respond.
Okay, that's fine.
That's the.
That's fine. What can I ask this? Okay, also now, we're putting out for another business administrator, am I right about that? You go, you want another one, right?
Well, you can direct to me.
Okay.
Let me just say this.
Okay.
We, we've heard, uh, by way of, uh, vote, a discussion regarding the business administrator's employment. That's done now.
Okay.
Discussion, so we're not in a position to be able to discuss that.
Okay.
You can give your observations or things of that nature, but we're not in a position at this point to answer any questions about it.
Okay, so that means I couldn't say that if someone comes up, uh, as another person, and some people on council decide that it doesn't work out, do we go through the same process again? We just keep going through administrators? That's the way it looks, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying this from a legal perspective, council has the right. Statutorily, the law says council has the right to select a business administrator, uh, after the mayor gives the advice and possesses that person's authority. And even under some circumstances beyond that. And they have the right by vote to remove a business administrator with two thirds of the actual council.
Oh, okay.
So that's a right there, that's something that this council is just coming up with on their own.
Oh, I, I know that, sir, I understand that, yeah, I just wanted to know what it goes.
It's our right and obligation.
I'm speaking to him, in fact, like, yeah, he's giving me a. Um, okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Um, and then we have someone on Zoom as well, so, I'll stick over, you'll be next after Mr. Martin.
Greg Martin, forty-sixth Bruce Street. Uh, my first comment or question is to Mr. Rivera. I want to know, um, what, what, will we strongly consider training, uh, police officers this time? Um, I know when I was on, um, school boards, and it seems like the same thing is happening with the police force. When you hire people that's from far away and other places, the likelihood of that is they're using this place as stepping stone. Um, I see it happen in our school system, you don't want to hire people that lives right here, that spend their money here. And the turnover is, is great. And I don't know if you guys know, it's a, it's a, it's a high rate of people that come here to our school district, get hired, get some spirits, and leave. And this might be the same thing that's happening with the police officers. I don't know if Mr. Rivera wants to answer that or not, or he can answer that another time. Maybe not.
It's up to you, I can answer it, certainly.
Keep going in the, in that event, sorry.
Okay, you can answer after, because I, I know the time, and I really don't like this three minute thing. Because we have been indoors, sitting here, sitting through five minutes. We pay taxes, and I'm not saying that people should go on forever. But when we say three minutes, when I, when we say three minutes, because I say, I know what I'll do, I'm on social media, and whatever I got to say gets out there. I got a, a very huge following, so whether it happens here or happens there, it's going to happen. I got another issue. Uh, disheartened by what's going on here. And it's no secret, Mr. Giordano, I have a lot of respect for you. But a young man came to me who I'm very friends with, the same topic y'all was talking about, he knows all about, he don't even come to council meetings. Know why? Because he heard you talking about. And, yeah, yes, he doesn't even know nothing about politics, he doesn't even follow politics. He knows about Sean Brown and people wanting him to resign. It's ludicrous. That stuff is being talked about all over the place, too many backdoor stuff going on around here. With everybody. My wife is all counsel, I don't like where the stuff, nothing when I'm in the House, politics, turn that shit off. She use my language. Because I don't want to hear about it.
That's for sure.
I'm here to help the town in any way possible, but I'm not with, with, like Mr. Carter said, with BS. You know what that stand for? The last thing I got to say, few weeks. The last thing I got is said, few weeks ago, I was in front of my house, and I seen a bumper, a guy dragging a bumper on his car down the street. And it caught my eye. I went around the corner, there's a lot of stuff busting up in the street. Looked like somebody had hit something. I came to the police station, and I asked the police officer to go investigate it, maybe look, because I thought somebody's car might have been hit. I say that to say this. We can't expect residents to come to report stuff and get blown off. When you're trying to look out for your neighbors, your town, and trying to, basically, community blocks, that's what the program is about. Could have been anybody's car, I don't know. Three days later, the stuff was still in the street, when I'm riding by, and we finally got it out the room. But I was blown off. Not even say the name, but I spoke to Mr. Rivera about it, but that's BS. That's all I've got.
Rich, did you want to respond to his question, or?
Yeah, sure, regarding the hiring, we look inward towards Pensgro first. And there were several council people, there's other people in the community that have come up to me, I've handed out applications personally. And we've only gotten one back. We attended a food bank last week, and there's a young lady that wants to apply, so of course, we're going to look within the community first. Here's one of the issues when you're talking about taking a shot on someone, giving them the opportunity. When I first got hired, beginning of this year, I was told by all the officers that no one ever gets sent to the academy, that Pensgro just doesn't send people to the academy. You need to look at it very objectively. First of all, you got to pay someone. And using Mr. Martin's analogy, you might be paying them to get trained and leave. So you don't see those results until five months later. So for the first time in many years, we sent an individual to the academy. And within the first week, he resigned. So it's not a matter of expedience to hire people from outside. But we're hiring people at a higher salary, so that they won't quit, and they have more incentive to stay, and with police experience from elsewhere. Of course, right now, what we're looking at is a situation where you'll have over 70% of the police department with limited experience in policing. So we're carefully considering all the applicants. And we'd be happy to hire someone from in-town, particularly on a part-time basis, so that we could groom them. But right now, we're in a crunch. And that's going to take a while to process the applications, get someone through the academy. Now with this other blast of COVID, the academy is going to be limiting the seats, so it's not a simple solution.
Madam Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Based off of what he said, or Mr. Tarver might have known. He said the guy left in a week. Is it anything that you can put in place if you're training a guy, after you spend money on somebody, right? But they just can't leave. You know, they have to have, they could sign a contract, so that's a learning, I don't know if it's possible, but that's a that's, to me, seems like an easy fit. And another thing, I would begin to train somebody that lives up the road, and for lack of a better place, law and side, before I would train somebody that I know that's been here all their life, high times, those people aren't going to leave. I would rather gamble on somebody that lives in the area.
Bring us the candidates. Bring them. I'd gladly sit down with them. Bring them.
You make a really good observation about that, because I think there is something. To do with other places and other things, so, you know, I think there may be something that we have to consider regarding to that. I know, working with Mr. Rivera, part of the problem with the people up the road is the people up the road are the ones who are lying. We really try to do that. So maybe one of the things we have to talk about, particularly people in the community, Mr. Rivera and others, is some form of program to get people who are here interested in doing this kind of work, and to recruit them locally. And, you know, those are things that people who are here, like yourself, can do, perhaps Mr. Rivera can't, because they don't have the same ties. So that's something that I think all of you can work on together.
Okay. Thank you. We have a question from Jeremy Glover. He wants to know, Jeremy, Mr. Glover, are you still on? Jeremy Glover? Mr. Glover is my neighbor to the Delaware Avenue. This question is, how can we get the lights fixed on the river wall and add more to brighten it up? Mr. Rambo, would you like to? I'm looking at Councilman Rambo.
Mayor, that has been a discussion, trying to get lights down there. That's something that we're working on, or we've discussed it anyway. More lighting down at the riverfront, because we do need it.
Well, it should be an easy fix if we didn't transfer the money out of the buildings and ground, or we need somebody with a lift truck. I'm not pointing to you, but I'm just saying, is that what it's called, a lift truck? Because Carney's Point said they didn't have one, am I right?
There's another suggestion, that Atlantic City Electric will actually install some lights for you, and all you do is pay the electric bill. You already looked at that?
Yes.
Because I have a few out in front of my place.
I've done that before.
Okay.
So and also with what the Scarpese is saying is, they maintain them. So if they install, we just pay the electric bill, that thing goes out. So just like the light in the park, Memorial Park, while we were in there, that thing was going on and off, on and off. So you have to take that pole number, there's a tag on there, and go ahead and call the electric company, and they'll come out and fix that light. So, yes, they're a good idea.
The electricity for one of them, I can say, the bill is between, in the summer, it's like $30, and in the winter, it's like $50.
Well, I know about the other poles, but because these were different poles, I wasn't sure if they were doing it or not, but nothing beats a family road drive.
They have all kinds of things that you can pick out, too.
Okay. Anyone else from the public have a question? All right, everyone, we are going into executive session. And then after our executive session, we'll come back to adjourn the meeting. Oh, no, we have to do it right now. Okay, so, resolution 2021-12-147. We have a resolution 2021-12-147, that is a resolution authorizing executive session. Addressing matters relating to attorney-client privilege and employment relationships pursuant to New Jersey statute 104-12B7 and 8, discussion of employment status as it relates to TAP. We have a motion to adopt. Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpese, you have a second. Thank you, Councilwoman Giordano. Madam Clerk, could you roll call? Councilman Carter?
Yes, yeah, I heard, yeah, I heard you guess.
Councilman Giordano? Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo? Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
What is that noise? Wait.
He was listening.
All right. That's why I put out here for us. That's the
I'd like the council to consider a resolution based upon our discussion approving the settlement that we discussed in the matter of TAP.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? You have to Madam Clerk, could you roll call? Second by Councilman Giordano, motion made by Councilwoman Scarpese. Kathleen Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Giordano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
I'd make one comment?
Here we go.
I'd like to thank Mr. Giordano for his diligence, and he will be sorely missed. Thank you for everything.
I would have got to do a plaque if I would have had time. There's still time, actually. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Mr. Brown, would you mind stepping up for a second while I speak to the council?
Thanks, Juan.